And subdivision, I think both of them we'd like to see, we know.
I'd even just call it site plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Let us talk to the other two towns and try to get something going.
Right. We got food available, we have tables, we have chairs, we got everything we need. Right upstairs, including another one of these. We can have you video. We can do that. But I thank you very much for coming in.
I've been up here a while since we got home. Been a long time. I mean now since we moved from Sanford.
Yeah.
I don't get around.
Right away.
Yeah, with the exception of like you guys and Chapley and I don't know maybe one or two, we're really not that much farther. We're not here from towns than we used to be. It just seems farther.
You come up from York?
Well, I live in South Berwick.
In South Berwick.
My office is in Saco.
Yeah, but South Berwick, I mean it's that very long, about 20 miles coming through Sanford to get here.
Well, it's nice to see you guys didn't have cell phone service down 109 there.
It stops around here.
Who used to die by tents down there all the way.
Yeah.
Now we can get to just about here before it dies.
Before it dies again?
Yeah. Hey, we're down there.
I went to the, a couple of years ago, went to the group that John Sylvester runs and you know, we were gonna apply for a grant to get some, you know, money to look at get broadband, you know, established in some of these rural towns and so for you guys and some of the other places. It was like, yeah, we're good enough. Okay, I'm not gonna push it on you, but. I don't know, anyway. Alright, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yep, whoops.
If y'all would just put your draft four aside because if you look at this, we don't have quite what I hear tonight, so after Yoli gets here, we'll just go over this one more time and then we can be done with it if y'all agree. Okay, sure, sure. Very good. So, have you read the minutes of the last meeting? And I would, if y'all have read them, when you all have read them, I would entertain a motion to accept them as written or as amended, as the case may be. Motion to accept as written. Do I give a second? Second? And all in favor? Any corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, on page 205 D in the list.
Yeah.
It looks like we mixed up a couple of sites here because you can't pronounce no on those words.
Page 205 under D?
D, traffic access meet standard contained coordinates. The driveway will be relocated to improve visibility, true. Signs will be posted, I think that's true, but we don't need this 30 foot of reclaimed asphalt, that was for a different.
That was for the back.
Yeah, so we could maybe just X that out.
Did the two lists get transposed maybe?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was.
I think the rest of the list is good, except that one.
Yeah, and that just got picked up from the ground there.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just X that out after will be posted.
Yeah, because I think they were gonna have some signs, I can't.
Yes. And all the way out to the end of the sentence.
Yeah. I think that was all I noticed.
Anyone else? Just wanna make sure that there's nothing in that we forgot in the other on the back one. And this is fine. Motion, no, second motion, second to accept as amended.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we amend them in a sense we just stated.
Thanks.
All in favor?
All in favor. Just writing that down, can I show Brenda those?
I had a question from a neighbor the other day about some of the conditions that we had set for Richard, and it's probably too late to make any changes to those, but one of the things I noticed in Richard's weather that we maybe should have carried down into the conditions was that he had stated when he was in front of us last, that there were proposed to be no retail sales from that.
Right.
And if I had, if I had thought that through or connected the dossier, I think I would have suggested that we make that a condition, but that's probably one of them.
I think it's on the plan.
It's on the plan, that's why, it's on the plan. Because it's for their, I don't know if you call it personally.
It's just a corporation use.
The corporation was only, right. Okay, now, do you have your minutes from April 16th that we gave to you at our last meeting, asked you to look over them, these were the ones that were done by three or four different hands and they were quite mixed up?
August 16th?
August 16th, you have those? Okay, there's one part on there where a motion was made by Ken and seconded by me, and we know that's not possible, so if you could just look at that and see. I have an idea that it was Leslie that made the motion, I just would like to be sure about that. And I believe you'll see X's where we took out the names.
I only see two of them where, I felt that they had my name as making the motion.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that was correct.
I believe that is correct.
And that where you seconded Ken?
He seconded one and. If you would read those two. And then the first one was approved of the minutes, moved by Leslie Verland to approve the minutes, Gavin Lejoy seconded. Alright, and then the other one was page 2.
The campground.
At the campground. Leslie Verland moved to accept the conditional use application, Gavin Muloney seconded.
Yes, okay, those were the two things that, we did have a problem that day, we did not, well, the camera was set up, it did not start recording the first 20 minutes of the meeting, and we had to, Leslie sat in with Brenda and me and we went over these as best we can, looking at the pictures and then went and from Brenda's notes and from when the recording started. As I said, they were, the first set of minutes were not useful because they just were not comprehensive enough. So, I would like to entertain a motion to accept them as amended, if that is the August 16 minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept as amended.
Is this the copy that has draft written on?
It should have the date, it should have the date on it. I can only.
It has a date, right?
August 16th.
Yeah.
It does have the word draft up here, okay, it's not the draft, no, I know it's not the draft, but.
Okay.
So I need a second on that motion to accept.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Very good, I feel good that we're putting that back there.
Just a quick question, Ken, when we say pertaining to gravel extraction, truck trips, do we mean over and back is one trip or?
In and out is one trip.
Okay. That might be a good thing to tie down sometime with the.
Definition?
Definition, yeah.
Okay, so next on our under new business, we have, has anyone, excuse me, I'll turn here, heard from Yoli?
What's that?
Have you, has anyone heard from Yoli?
She's usually here by now.
Yeah, she's usually here by now, so before we go into new business.
Maybe she just thought she was gonna miss the meeting, it started at 6:00 and then just.
Okay, all right. Best practical location applications, Randall and Linda White, 171 Mountain View Drive, map 131, left, 025, applying to do renovations which exceed 50% of the appraised value.
I've had truck trips and some definitions.
Data, if you could bring us up to data now.
So currently what they're trying to do here, this is Mountain View, they've got an existing camp there, they wanna do a major renovation to the existing camp and also in addition to the side of it. We don't think the major renovation is going to come near the 50%, but they're cutting the roof off redoing this and if they get into a bunch of rot and stuff, it could exceed the 50%. The existing foundation they're reusing.
It's waterfront.
They're back close to the water, right?
No, there's 75 back, I would say, so that's the back of it, they're putting the addition over onto the side, this is looking at it from the road.
That's waterfront too, well, it's got a little water.
So that's the house there.
And the other foot space from the water.
The additions on this side over here, the back of it, gets out of about 100 feet where they're doing it out into this area, so they can do the addition onto the side with 30% expansion, that didn't need the planning board review, but once they tie into this house here and they get into ripping the roof and bringing things together, they'll get into a lot of, I think, a lot of rot down towards the bottom and stuff, so in lieu of dealing with the 50% and having appraisers and assessors value things, like I said, they're going to reuse the existing foundation out there, that's our foundation down under here too, so it seems reasonable to me to allow the replacement in the exact same location if they get down to it.
So if it's necessary because of rot?
Yeah, and now they're gonna make you cut the roof off, so to me, that's probably 20% of the assessed value and if they get into the sides and some undercarriage and do some gut out, replace some windows and doors, now you're into 30, 35, it's not leaving much of a buffer, so.
Right, and you never know what happens.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Start cutting back.
They're leaving the porch and stuff on the tree there for.
I think when they get into it, they're gonna find a lot of that, it's a lot of damage to it.
I would imagine that would be what might be adding to that percentage because those kind of things can look okay now.
Yeah, the front of it's 66 to 70 feet back of there.
How far would that put them?
They're not going to go any closer, they're just gonna rebuild on that foundation and do, any addition would be from the porch side back over on the side.
Right.
And a little in the rear.
What place is that?
Pond's Pond.
No, no subject air cooperation.
No, no, the current ones, they were all built in the late 70s or so, T-111, 2x41, probably electric heat back in those days.
Wish you were with the construction into that side property line.
Nope, they've got a good. Maybe 42 feet. Once they do the addition, they'll have to get a certified plot plan because they get a little closer and we'll work the other one out. So the renovation would be no closer than the existing.
And it's pretty flat there, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, definitely, it's kind of, it all slopes to the water, but.
Yeah.
And they're not gonna be doing anything that's gonna change that?
Correct, yeah, the only activity they're doing is the addition over on the side, a little bit of wraps around to the backside. Once you get to the back, you're out of the 100-foot zone anyways.
Right. Okay, so what? What do we have that we want to make sure of, right?
Correct. They would be using the existing foundation in no closer than 78 feet from the water. 35 from the inside.
So what's your recommendation, Ken?
I would say it's whether reusing the existing foundation, no encroachment and with 78 feet from the water, seems reasonable to me.
I move that we accept Ken's recommendation.
We can't do that, we're gonna stop you right there, we can't accept, you have to make the recommendation.
Wait, did I just get the agenda?
Yeah, you just read the agenda, yeah, you can't, we can't accept Ken's recommendation, we have to, so you're just gonna accept.
I recommend for the proposal of Randall and Linda White at 171 Mountain View Drive to renovate a residence, I vote we approve that. Is that what you want?
Yeah, second. All in favor, any discussion?
And we'll add that no closer than 78 feet of the, or no closer than the existing church of the white, I'm not sure the exact.
And reusing the existing.
Existing foundation.
Yes, it'd get bigger, 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 and drink the foundation out, then at that time.
Yeah.
Then we should have.
Right.
Do you think that area flooded during April or May storm?
No.
You know, awesome, there's not a lot of dampness in their basement.
Yeah.
I bet they have damp basement.
Could be, but with this renovation, when they're done, they probably won't, they shouldn't.
So if they get into the foundation, they'll come back to us?
Probably what they do is damp proofing around it, a better damp proofing product or drainage, especially when they.
Or they get to decide.
That's the end of it, yeah.
As you go further up, Newbridge into that area, it's more of a muddier soil. But this is still bony and.
Second.
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 I, yeah.
Okay.
All in favor with the submissions, which were?
I just wanna add the revegetation as warranted by Stormwater Management.
Yeah.
We should have that as, Linda White.
We do.
We pretty much do.
That's the one they have.
That should be boiled by down everything we do. Okay, so now I will ask, all in favor? Passes. Dennis, you have the three conditions, three conditions? No, I'm fine, not Dennis, I'm looking at Tom, he said Dennis.
I didn't break him down.
Trying to ask.
Okay, Brad, what do you have?
I have no encroachment, reuse existing foundation, and no closer than 78 feet from the high water point. Is that what you have?
Yes.
No encroachment, reuse existing foundation, and no closer than 78 feet from the high water.
The vegetation is on permit, the revegetation is on the permit, so that, that is there.
And then also try to restore our management plan, and most people are doing a drip line trench or a, which just has three detention drywells installed in the project on 7th Street that were massive amounts, so that was a really good one they did out there.
Great. According to our agenda, let's go to Sean. This is all we have on right now, so I would like to go back to the bylaws and I do wish, but if you would look at page 107 and on page 90 in this main may use law booklet, which I did, I am frankly not sure, under conflict of interest, it frankly says what we have said, it's not as if we can really, unless we simply want to take the whole paragraph out and put Florida State statute, page 90, and name it.
Well, that'd be consistent with.
With the, that would be consistent?
But it's not as quick as we did that.
Fewer words are better words.
Right, though when someone joins the board and you hand them the bylaws, I mean, that's a good point, yeah, I won't tell you right now, we'll explain it to you. Is that exactly what I said?
Because it actually goes on through our one, three pages, two and a half pages, two and a half, three pages, it goes on to three pages.
What their response to me Gavin was when I said that was that with the technology today, if anybody has a question, they can either go over it on to their cell phone or Kenny has the capabilities here to put it right upon the board if you want it and bring it off to you or anything like that, so there's no reason to have so many words and have this along and just refer to the statute.
I mean, we would have.
It makes it simple, I guess.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, here's, here's number five under conflict of interest, former municipal or county officials.
Right.
Sitting on at this table.
I think we should include that reference right in.
Yeah, that's.
In 1.4, but I don't know if we need to take that.
I definitely include the reference.
Yeah, 100%.
But I mean, if it makes people more comfortable to have it in here, yeah, but I think if they do, the.
Refer to the book itself.
Refer, yeah, the 2017, it's not like a main statute.
Right.
2017 may use law booklet, page 90, but put that at the end, leave what's in there there, I think we can take out.
The parentheses.
The parentheses and just refer to, you know, the 2017 may state, page 90.
Right. Confirm it.
Confirm.
One of the bills Gavin had at the workshop was trying to make it simple.
Yeah.
We always tried to do that, try to get rid of the.
Access for. We did that, if you look at this.
Yeah, and stuff like that.
Tom, what do you think of that, are you in favor of just putting the reference to the book on the bottom of 1.4?
Yeah, I would wish we could squeeze the mud out of it and just put for further, for more detail or whatever, and then give the citation, right? I think it would be nice if we could come up with two sentences which might encapsulate what we intend there.
Those sentences that's there, does that meet your needs?
Yeah.
That sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one sentence?
Yeah.
And then refer to this, okay. Gavin.
Leaving the what sentence?
Leaving the term conflict of interest, shall be construed to me, just as it is, take out everything in the parentheses, okay, just here, just, yeah, and then the reference.
And then refer to this.
Same definition.
Right, and then if you've read the rest of the next page, then everything has to. This is the corrective, this will go to Brenda for final typing and for us to sign. Anything there?
Under membership.
Mm-hmm. Because the subcommittee has worked on this, but we.
I wasn't on the subcommittee.
So that's why we're.
Not that you popped out at me.
Okay.
But you still have select man.
Looks where, we'll check. Where, oh, I see, under 2.1, yeah, we have one there, okay, got away, you know, they're slipping.
Who's walking in?
Here was. The keyboards are very slippery.
I was a little bit complicated, you know, her on camera.
Something's always got you on camera.
Oh, yeah.
I think it was interesting to note that Paul thought that the executive secretary concept was new to him.
Yeah, because it's not new to MMA, and I did really see, well, the many of this and planning board commission, there's a difference, obvious difference between the two, and I don't think that's something I necessarily need to be, you know, they're great, both good sources for advice and, yeah.
Yeah, because MMA, I mean, they're all liability.
Right, exactly.
Everything they say is, you have to do liability.
Exactly. Thank you. And very welcome.
Looks good to me.
Do you like it?
Yeah.
And if you need to, if you, if changes come up, we're waiting, but I'll make you a bunch.
Joyce, could we just review this?
Yeah, because.
We're about on it.
We're about on it tonight.
Did you say you want to make us lunch, Brenda, or are you just gonna make a bun?
You don't want me making you lunch, please.
Why's this one?
I do a lot of things good, but cooking isn't one.
My poor mother, we used to joke with her, she cleaned really good, but she didn't cook very good. And we used to say, she could make leftovers from scratch.
See, that takes time.
I have a question, this just occurred to me, under election of officers, what page do we have, page four? Okay, 4.1 says that the nominations shall be made at the annual organizational meeting, and then 4.1.2 says the candidate receiving majority vote shall serve a full three-year term.
That's not supposed to be three years. That's not supposed to be three years. That's supposed to be...
But if we're having an annual organizational meeting, why are they doing a full three-year term?
We change that to one year.
All right. Why do we even need that?
Yeah, we do.
I know, but why do we even need that sentence? If it's all covered, if it's a one-year annual term in the first paragraph.
Well, I'm all for eliminating other sentences.
Does that make sense? I'm not sure I'm following it exactly. All right, 4.1, yeah, I see what it says, okay. And then at 4.1.2 says that the candidate receiving the majority vote shall serve a full three-year term. Is that as an officer? That really refers, because the officers are elected yearly.
Right.
So we need to eliminate.
So we need to eliminate that. Because you're just cost serving for three years.
Yeah.
Well, my term's for three years, but I need... I think next year you get to vote if you want to keep me on.
It's a chairman.
As chairman.
As chairman.
If they've got to want to keep you on, then your term's only one year.
But that's only, that is only for the president and the vice, like the chairman and the vice chairman.
For the officers.
That's only for the officers, right. But if your term, you're on a three-year term.
But it said, I mean, everyone's on a three-year term. This is just election of officers, under election of officers.
Right, so you don't need that three-year term because your term is put in...
Membership.
Yep, we got it. So we could eliminate completely 4.1.2, okay.
Why didn't you just listen? You made the recommendation, I agree with you.
I don't know.
So you wanted us to explain it, that's why.
Explain yourself, Lucy.
You're talking to me or her?
Okay, so 4.7, we will eliminate 4.1.2.
So 4.1.3 now becomes 4.1.2.
Correct. Very good. So, and just because someone's going to ask, if we get a resignation from an officer, the vote is immediate.
At the next meeting.
At the very next meeting, you know.
Do we have to write that?
It's in there, it's in there. 4.1.2, write that.
It's immediate.
So immediately filled, immediately filled. We're not going to wait until...
I don't think immediate would be... Immediate is the next meeting, the next time we need it.
Well, that's what you're implying, but...
Joyce, are you going to continue to change chairman to chair throughout?
Yes, it makes, there's a missed couple, okay. Yeah, I see. And 5.2.
So you don't think you need to say that?
At the next meeting?
No, I don't think we need to.
Okay, so 4.1.2. Leslie says we don't need to put at the next meeting, and Dennis says we should. I think immediately filled, yeah.
It's the next day.
And why are you going to be...
Because the rest of the meeting.
No, I'm just saying it's a clarification.
Well, the old bylaws is by regular election procedures. So that indicates it would have to be at the next meeting or at a meeting, you can't just do it on a...
We're not all going to come here just to do that.
Right, well, I'm just...
I'm just saying that that word just needed to be in there.
All right, so then we can say at the next scheduled meeting?
At a scheduled meeting.
Next scheduled meeting.
Would make your immediately concept filled.
Say that, sorry, I didn't hear.
When you said immediately, next meeting means that.
I know, but we're trying to make everybody happy.
And does that also just that annual position?
Yes, it says the annual position.
Is that all the annual?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I hate to add words.
Well, we took some out, too.
Yeah, we took one out, too.
So we're at a wash right now.
And we did 5.2. Get rid of that man, got it in?
Yes, we got rid of the man in 5.2. Okay, Gavin, we're going back to you. You started a lot of trouble just by adding things.
So we got rid of 4.1.2 altogether?
We did, yes.
Okay.
On the outside expertise, when Paul was here, he kept saying at the expense of the applicant.
Right.
But in an earlier meeting, I'd asked the question, how do we pay for it? Somebody said we had a budget.
Right.
So do we need to clarify that one way or the other? Or just not even mention it?
Apples and oranges. We have a budget as a planning board. There's money available to us. But that is not the money we would be using for something like that. We would make the applicant pay for it, like that it's in...
Here's, I have an example, the classes that we're going to have.
Right.
There's no applicant to pay for it.
Yeah.
We have to pay for it.
Just like him, what we get on these bylaws that comes out of the budget, anything you cost us.
But like when you had Submain review his plans, the bill came to us, I had to bill him.
Right.
So in that case...
Very good example, you know. You know, the MMA meeting that unfortunately you didn't make, there was that breakdown in communication. It didn't come out of your pocket or my pocket to go to that. That came out of the budget that is here. But this kind of thing, and you found it in the zoning?
Yeah, so it was in the condition.
In the conditional uses or something that, you know, if we had needed something on Buzzell Road and we needed to hire someone to come in and do it, we'd have charged Mr. Martel.
Any of those waivers, the high intensity soil survey, we asked you to do it, you know, you would hire someone to do it.
Yeah.
So do we need to even mention it?
Well, it's in the book, do we need it in the bylaws? It's in the zoning. I don't think we do. Okay, good.
We don't need repetition.
Seems like the only thing would be the majority of the board is required. It's like, because here we get out just a meeting and it was only, you know, three people here and one who was an alternate, and then they decided they wanted to do this.
Then we got three votes.
So that's the majority of the board, so it's a meeting.
It's not the majority, you're right, that's not the majority.
That's the part I was interested in, the outside expertise. How many people in the planning board does it take to make the decision to hire someone, I guess?
So we had that discussion earlier this afternoon. If we only have three board members and there's an alternate here, and you appoint that alternate to be a board member, is that an official voting?
Yes, it's a quorum.
So that was under the law that is, you must have three bits of the board, of the board voting to go into it.
But usually that requirement for expertise is part of your conditions.
Right.
You probably roll it into the conditions.
Roll it into that, yeah.
Which usually takes a majority anyway, so...
Right.
We probably check to hold on to everything.
Yeah.
Could be redundant.
Right, right. Okay.
So what is it, do we think we can strike number six entirely, or?
No, I don't think we can strike number six.
We have it in our...
So that's just a reminder to the planning board that they can require...
Right, because when we start looking for things...
Well, I'm not sure this is referring to an applicant. I don't think, at least bylaws, I don't think this outside expertise is necessarily referring to the applicant. It could be if we wanted to look at the new type of ordinance as, you know, we were working on it, we hired someone to help us with the verbiage of the thing.
Right.
Just like we did tonight.
Right.
Did we have to pay them?
Yes. Oh, yeah. I would say I would leave it, it doesn't restrict us in any way. And it like, it tells us we have this, and then...
Procedural.
Yeah, it's really procedural, it is. Because who is always going to remember, oh, wait a minute, that's in that book, too? You know, I mean, one of the things in this said we should know the bylaws. We should be familiar with bylaws. A lot easier to be familiar with these than being familiar with every word in every one of our ordinances. I mean, we become familiar with them, the more we use them. But your years and Tom's years certainly outweigh even Leslie, who probably next, you know, you're Lee Leslie and the rest of us. You know, the more you use, the more familiar you get. It's, you know, it's a lot to keep going, so... Okay, the regular meetings, I think, we're at.
Looks like you guys added the third in there.
Yeah, first and third.
Because they just said first in there.
Right.
You can strike that second sentence. Not going to be holding meetings anywhere else besides...
Say that again.
I think the phrase, meetings may be rotated to various other locations to enable better service attendance should be struck. We're not going to be moving around like a truck wagon.
I agree with that, seeing as we have an overabundance of people attending our meetings.
And what happens if they have to move upstairs? Only doubles advocate here.
They can find us.
Do what, Tom?
They can find us.
Oh, we have the next time.
Well, the next sentence says that the recording secretary shall notify members in the public if the meeting times have changed.
Right.
So we're just eliminating that middle sentence.
It's not even a sentence, it's a step portion. So it's town hall period, correct?
Yeah.
And then you strike out, meetings may be rotated. Leaving in the recording secretary shall if we have to move. Okay? Everybody okay with that change?
So the standard meeting place shall be the town hall.
No, shall be the ground floor of the town hall.
CEO conference room.
The standard meeting place shall be the CEO conference room located on the ground floor of the town hall, period. And then it's the recording secretary shall have the responsibility of notifying the members of the public if meeting location and times are changed.
And we notify the public, you can put a note on the door.
That's what it takes. That's what it takes.
Well, I mean, if for some reason we have to move upstairs and somebody comes five minutes late, there's nobody here.
Right.
So I... Yeah, okay. So a quorum is three members, right? Yep. So you say an executive session takes three fifths of the...
That's the law.
So it's going to be three fifths of three?
No, 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 three fifths out of the five.
Out of the five.
Three fifths out of the five.
But it says members present and voting. What if there's only three members present and voting?
We have to wait till...
I think you have to wait, then you got to wait.
Then should you say that?
That's it.
You would have three of the five.
Yeah.
It would have to be unanimous, then.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have to wait three. You still have three out of the five.
Oh, wait, we want to...
Three fifths of three is what you're saying.
No, the law says three fifths of five.
But it says three fifths of members present and voting. What if you only have three members present and voting?
I've voted twice before, a few times, and other committees have...
So if you only have three members present and voting, then it's three fifths of those three?
It would have to be all three, because if you only had two, it would be two-thirds, it wouldn't be three fifths.
What if you struck, just for clarity's sake?
Two-thirds would be more than three fifths, you'd be fine.
Present and voting, is that clear?
Sixty-six percent.
Hang on, Tom. Tom, would you like to restate, please?
If you will mention the phrase, president and voting.
Yeah, it's... This is state law, verbatim, but it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
So while we know that that is true in a lot of issues...
So you would just have to tell me what three fifths of three is? So, because I'm terrible at that.
Well, three fifths of three is just two out of the three members. Would be sixty-six percent opposed to sixty percent. So that would...
That's right.
That would work.
I think the intent of the law is three fifths of the members.
I do, too. Which would be three.
Present and voting kind of kills that.
Maybe we should just eliminate the and voting.
How about taking out three fifths of the members, period? Right, so that would be three.
And take out president and voting? He also told you, then it would still be two, would be sixty-six percent.
So what's three fifths of? You have to give me a chart.
No, 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 we have a planning board, not the...
My calculator over.
Okay.
So what do you say?
Take out president and voting. And make a capital T.
But that would mean we'd have to wait until we had... Would that require us to wait to wait more members or not?
Well, if you have two members voting yes and one voting no, then you can't go to executive session and take the...
The quorum.
So what if it's president?
You can't just do away with that and say majority?
No, because it's the law, it's in the statute.
But what I'm saying is, when you have a five-member board, three fifths, it's three out of five.
Right.
And that is a majority.
And that's all for a quorum, you know?
It's not the same that we're always going to have five members.
But we don't have four people on it.
We could have six members at any point if they decide to add another member.
But then we only five vote, Tom.
Right, well, that would change, too. If they added another voting member, I mean, and that can happen.
Other types of difference, like boards.
Yes, yeah.
But the law says three fifths.
The law says, the terminology in the statute is three fifths.
Isn't that crazy? So if you only had four people present at that meeting...
It would still be three. It would still be three, yeah. It would be sixty... You're over fifty percent, basically, if that be, you're over fifty percent.
Which would be three.
Which, exactly. And if two vote no, you are not going into executive session. So, you know. You can't say unanimous, because unanimous would mean all five.
Leslie would have...
But it's not what the statute says, I know.
No, that's not what the statute says. But that's verbatim what the statute said?
Yeah, because I pulled it up when there was...
Then they didn't do much homework, did they?
Well, we're not...
But we can still adhere to the intent of a law by removing the word is president and voting.
Yes, you're excellent, okay.
All right, substitute for a quorum.
That would change it. Because if the number changed from five to six, form... And forget it, we're not going for it.
Eight point one?
Eight point one? Oh, we're not there yet. No, we're not there yet. We're still digesting this one.
This is a quick one. Isn't the three fifths the intent of that, that a quorum be present?
Right, no.
Yes.
The statute doesn't say quorum, it says three fifths of the board.
Well, I would dispute that. In the absence of a quorum, we have no legal...
If you didn't have a quorum, you wouldn't be meeting anymore.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But we can't rewrite laws. But we can't rewrite law, I guess is what we're saying. We can follow the intent of the law just by leaving it like this.
Okay. They probably spend more time on trying to make this law than we are trying to fix it.
Well, there's something that is gonna probably happen once in a million years.
Yeah, probably never in any of our lifetime.
They shouldn't spend more time...
Exactly. So I can't think of any reason why this board would go into an executive session.
We get that perhaps.
It's very legal advice.
It's legal advice.
You have to consult your lawyer or something.
But if you read the law, you can't just go into, say, a meeting with a lawyer. It has to be, you have to get a precise reason.
But that's why they use the actual term precise.
That's why if you read seven point three point two...
Such a case or something. They do executive session in the selectmen's meeting.
They've been doing it wrong, because I call that a law. Because I actually read them a section. Because there's three requirements and they only met one.
Which is, which is back?
Two.
Seven point two, point one? And get rid of that. Got it?
Yep, the guy's gone. I just whacked him out. Thank you.
So I think you have to make a motion to come out of the executive session.
You could make a motion to go into executive session. But then you come out and then you reopen the meeting.
But you have to...
Because they got to go into executive and got to call a meeting to an order, make a motion to go into executive session, state the precise reason why. Okay, that's here. So let's read it up in here. Seven point three point two, because we got a half an hour and then we're all tired. So seven point three point two. "The motion to go into executive session shall indicate the precise nature of the business of that session and no other matters may be considered. No ordinance, regulations, contracts, appointments, or other official actions shall be finally approved at such executive sessions per MRS A405, Chapter 13."
So that was our effort at taking that long verbiage and putting it into a paragraph that we could use.
Exactly. And then the last one says, "Within the executive session, it shall be the chair's responsibility to ensure that only that business, the session has been, if the session was called, will be discussed." So you can't go off the rails.
Why do you need that? Because it already says that in section two.
Because it's the chairman's responsibility.
I think it needs to be stated.
It's stated.
Because if you don't, it really isn't. It's a class E. It's a class E.
It's not a class E if only you had a son.
What I'm saying is you say it twice.
Somebody needs to have a responsibility.
So you don't need to say it the first time then? You need to say it twice. You're saying the same thing twice.
Well, we're saying it to the whole board, okay? But the minute you go off point...
When we went to the executive session, then it's up to you to follow this, so...
It's up to all of us, but if you go off point...
It's up to you as chair.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Exactly. So you're gonna explain this when we go into executive session.
But it's still a responsibility.
That's what I'm saying. It is a responsibility. And seven point three point three, it says it's a responsibility.
Right, and that's why it says...
But it doesn't need to be in seven point three point two.
It does.
It does, it does.
I don't see why.
It doesn't say.
It's not in there.
It doesn't say it's my responsibility in three point two.
No, it doesn't say it's your responsibility. What I'm saying is, the stipulations in this one here are the same as the stipulations in this one, except this one here adds that the chair is going to, is going to, you know, put these stipulations in on the executive session. But here you're saying it twice. You're saying it...
No, what you're saying in three point two is what cannot be talked about. And in three point three, you're saying whose responsibility it is to make sure those are addressed. The three point three is just giving the responsibility to one person.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with it. You had another half on, I would say.
You did it well.
That's why it's factual.
No, it's actually... No, no, we got a couple. These are Boil-A-Wood plate things, bylaw amendments. And bylaws, by the way, we are going to B-Y-L-A-W out of three or four dictionaries. We checked it in. We came up that it is simply bylaw, one word, usually with a capital B. Because it is a thing. It's the name of a thing. And some computers will tell you it's wrong and watch it at the time. But that's, you know, the way it is. So they're Boil-A-Wood plate. If anybody wants to see, change something a little bit? I think they're just...
Eight point one, I have a question.
Huh?
Eight point one, you say it may be amended by five hundred vote of the entire planning board. Why don't you just say your name as well?
By about seven. We all need to get it over on it, so they do, okay?
That's good. I'll let you have it.
Data's gonna let me vote if anything happens. It's just maybe give it to her in a while and just sit here. Every two weeks, for the rest of my life and just listen to what's going on.
We just go point to it and if anything goes wrong? Dennis may be doing...
Everybody has a purpose, Dennis.
I heard that.
So what's gonna happen now? And Gavin is still reading that and reminding someone.
I'm just looking it over and I think I'm all set.
Okay, then I would like to, and both Don and Gavin will be voting. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the bylaws of the planning board as amended October fourth, 2018.
So moved.
Strike.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Good job.
And next, our next meeting?
The one...
We will sign. We put our John hand cards in.
And that's when we present it to a selectman? Or do we present it to a selectman before we sign it?
I would do it after we sign. They don't have anything to say about our bylaws.
Wait a minute, I thought you said we had to put these in front of the selectman?
We do, but they don't have anything to know. After we vote, we know not that we need to approve our bylaws.
I don't think they do. I thought somebody said that.
Someone may have said that, but they're wrong.
I think it would be a good idea to put it on your webpage.
Yeah, we can put it on our webpage. But I will ask to be in on the agenda in two weeks to just present it to them.
Can I just go back to this one? Didn't, wasn't it said that the bylaws are policy? And the only one that's part of, you know, the policy? It's almost like a jaw description of what it is. And didn't we decide, or somebody say that the selectmen are the only one that can do policy? The planning board doesn't do policy?
Who told you that?
No, I thought it was part of a conversation we had here.
Do you think so?
This is policy. She...
But do the... And there's nothing on any of these
I've never seen.
where it's adopted by the planning board or revised and approved. There's nothing that's said by the selectman.
I think it's provided in the selectman's courtesy.
It's a courtesy. If you look at the end, adopted by the vote of the planning board. These are all planning board members. There's not a selectman's name on there.
Laura spoke to me the other night of the selectman's name. I've seen it for years. I got it.
So...
Please don't talk to him.
The poor Jim, he doesn't eat dog. He's not eating dog, but he left. Oh my goodness. No, it's finally, I...
So you want signature line for all seven members and a date?
And then just a couple days later, you take the select.
And the date as well? Say what?
You want signature lines for all seven members and a date? Or another one date or seven dates?
No, we did it as of today.
So...
I kind of like it like this, where it says revised and approved by the planning board dated blah blah.
Yeah, exactly, like that. Yeah, so what we can do is do the two words. They don't throw things out to like try to put a monkey wrench in.
We do the two words.
And don't put the devil's advocate.
We put it that way.
We put those two dates.
It's good that you look at all sides of it and look at all possibilities.
Why don't we give them that power that they shouldn't have?
I disagree. It's just, I think that we...
Because you totally agree on us.
Look at all possibilities and all that all happens.
I would say they would have...
And have a hard conversation about it so in case that...
But you know what? There's only one thing you're right on that they're not gonna like. And that is, they go from ninety-six to eighty-seven.
Are you still in session?
I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Virginia?
I'm with you.
All in favor? Good night and thank you very much.